Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for is agenda changes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, under new business, we would request item five be added to the agenda, which we'll be discussing setting a city council work session. And then, um, just one technical change on, under the consent agenda, item number two, the agenda reflects the wrong ordinance number. It should be 2022 AP 19. You guys passed 18 last meeting, so, uh, the, what your signing has the correct number, but the agenda still had last meetings number on there, so just that note.
Any questions of that change, council?
No.
No.
Hearing, none. Uh, let's move on to, uh, public forum. And it looks like we have, uh, Mr. Perkins here to address the council tonight. Give us your full name and your address, Mr. Perkins, and tell us why you want to visit with us.
Hello, my name's Alan Perkins. I live at 303 Walnut in here in town. And, uh, six, eight months ago, I was here. I complained about the state of the roads and them being too narrow and needing widened because of, uh, our yards were basically growing into the road. Well, they came and they graded and widened the roads and kept up with it for a month, maybe two, and then the roads just got ignored. I've seen one grader out really since then. And, I mean, there's potholes that'll swallow a car on some of our dirt roads. Uh, the, I mean, our, our road specifically is, is washboard for almost the entire block. Our neighbor down the road has, uh, done some maintenance on it himself because he works for one of the construction companies in town, so he comes and takes care of the alley. And then sometimes he'll fix like right at the corner, but that doesn't take care of the whole town. And I, I'm just hoping that we can do something and get our dirt roads, get some upkeep on them because they're not touching them. Uh, and I mean, I would hope that our maintenance here in town would take care of that, but, uh...
Well, I'm not a road grader expert. I can, I can appreciate your comments, but I do know, I've been told, Pat, don't we usually like a little moisture before we try to do that grading?
It helps.
And we haven't had a lot of moisture.
I know it's been dry, but, uh, there has been some rain and still nothing's been done when the rain came, so...
You're at 303 Walnut?
Correct.
Well, I'll personally drive down there and take a look at it and we'll see if we can get to it as soon as we can. We do have some improvements slated for some of that area, right, Ethan? Off of Pine, but...
Um, the more, all in the dirt side, that'd be mostly grading, yeah, it'd be further south.
I mean, we have the same issue on 10th Street. We have people building new, nice houses out there and it's always trash.
Yeah, and that street gets a lot of traffic.
There's a block south of us, if you turn to the west, that, I mean, the pothole's just ginormous. It goes from, you know, the one road to the other and, I mean, it's huge. And then down, let's see, further north on Walnut there, I mean, there's some ruts that are just probably this deep, this wide. Uh, and that pothole I was just telling you about, that, that one's even bigger, so, and then the, on our, on Third is just pure washboard, um, so, but I'm sure most of the dirt roads in town are probably like that. Anyways, thank you.
It, it's an ongoing issue, but we'll, we'll specifically take a look at these biggest problem areas and see if we can get something done with them.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Anybody else here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda? Seeing no movement from the gallery, I'll close the public forum and move on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, um, having reviewed the consent agenda and trusting that the, um, others have also, and also noting the, uh, change to ordinance number, um, uh, item number two, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Have the motion in the second to approve the consent agenda with the modification noted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move into new business. And the first item under new business is a Main Street closure request, and I believe we have Dominic Schuie here for K's to address the council.
Well, I'm Dominic Schuie and I'm a board member from K's and Mrs. Claire Clifford is our sponsor. And we're looking to close off from like Third to the Crossroad Church. Um, I think it's in two weeks after our last home game versus Genie for a fifth quarter. We have a meal deal, um, with Peppers and I think the coffee shop at Crossroads is, I think it's called Sips, is also gonna stay open. And this would just be for high schoolers and we're looking to maybe even include middle schoolers since we do have a K's club, um, with them.
How long would you want to keep the street closed? Do you got a time?
I think just from after the football game to, um, before 12:00. Just because usually we don't really know when the football game's gonna get finished.
So sometime during the fourth quarter of the football game, we'll close it off and keep it closed till midnight?
So 8:30, 9:00, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Aside from closing the, the roads, do you need anything else?
I really don't think so. I think we have everything else set up. I think we're gonna get different, um, Gaga Ball games and speakers and I think we're just gonna talk to other restaurants just to have them stay open and provide meal, meal deals.
Okay. What's the date on this again?
Um, I don't know the date for sure. I guess I should have read that down. Yeah.
October 21st, right.
All right, council, there's your information. It's up to you to approve this.
Mr. Mayor, if, um, there's no more questions, I would make a motion to approve the closure of Main Street on October 21st from Third Street North, uh, to Crossroads Community Church, uh, for the Hall State's fifth quarter block party.
Do we want to just close that between Third and Second? Brad's nodding his head. So let's amend this motion to close it from Third to Second on Main Street.
Amend that motion to close from Third to Second on the 21st, uh, for the Crossroads Community Church for their fifth quarter block party.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion in the second to close Main Street from Second to Third, starting sometime in the fourth quarter of the football game and ending abruptly at midnight so we can get traffic flowing, although there won't be a lot of traffic that time of night. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes. Have fun and enjoy yourself and be safe.
Thank you. If you have any more questions, just talk to Mrs. Clifford. That'd be, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in, Dominic. Next item under new business, uh, this is kind of a fun one. The SRTS Preliminary Engineering Design and Consulting Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in the packet, you have a draft agreement, uh, with, uh, H.W. Lochner, uh, which is just referred to as Lochner, uh, for preliminary design engineering, um, surveying of the areas of the city where we will be doing the Safe Routes to Schools, uh, Priority One improvements that we just received the $400,000 grant for. The city is free to select any or could do an RFP for consultant services. Lochner, uh, has been with us, helped design the plan, um, has done several, um, Safe Routes to School plans, very familiar with KDOT, um, and, and making sure that we stay, uh, in good graces with KDOT throughout the project. So, uh, staff would recommend, continuing with Lochner, their, their costs have increased a little bit from their original estimate for this preliminary design work. I will note that this has always been anticipated, uh, this money comes from the city directly. We're not allowed, under that Transportation Alternative Grant, to do the, uh, any of the preliminary work as part of those grant funds, so this is 100% funded by the city. Um, and that was expected, but this, uh, basically will get that process started, uh, to keep us in a good timeline, uh, for actually getting the, uh, work done under the grant and submitted timely to KDOT, so... And it has been sent, uh, prior to the meeting for Brad for any comment or review as well.
Generally, nothing about this one that I have any changes to, which is unusual. They use the indemnification language that I often suggest, so they beat me to that in terms of that element of it. Seven days notice, so we don't have any kind of issues with the length of time on the contract. Everything else generally seems to be in order. They're not asking for full liquidated damage claim payments in the event we, for some reason, chose to stop in the middle. It'd just be what they'd incurred up to that date, so it all appears to be in order.
And I was involved in a few of these SRTS meetings and those guys from Lochner were very knowledgeable of this program and, and very helpful in helping steer us in the right direction.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no discussion or questions, I would also make a motion to approve the consultant agreement from H.W. Lochner for consultant services related to Safe Routes to School Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed $80,000 and subject to staff or requested legal revision and authorization for C manager to sign the document.
Second.
Have the motion in the second for this SRTS Engineering Consultant Agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Request for Proposals for Improved Internet Connectivity. I'll let Ethan lead us into that one.
Thank you. So, in the packet is a draft, uh, request for proposal, uh, basically, uh, to send out to interested or, um, parties that would look at improving internet connectivity. Uh, that is one of the, um, approved expenditures that we can use for, uh, the ARPA funds that the city received. Basically, it's a pretty vague RFP allowing, um, contractors, I mean, we're not obligating anyone to, to give us any direct, um, technology. Uh, we do mention, you know, that we want any project submitted to be something that can be scalable for the future. Um, but whether, you know, it's, um, as long as it's meeting definitions of broadband, high speed, and demonstrates basically the ability to connect city facilities as noted. Um, and then also you'll note on the evaluation criteria, um, it'll be evaluated on what benefits it brings to the community, both for persons who might be subscribers and persons who would be non-subscribers, um, a- as rating criteria. I will note that we're not obligated to, um, accept or, uh, go forward with any proposal we might receive under this, but this basically, if approved, we will get this published and sent to, uh, any interested party uh, that might have a way or a method that they feel is appropriate to improve internet connectivity in Hallstead.
Any questions, council?
Once again, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve issuance of publication of Request for Proposal, RFP for Hallstead Community Improvement Internet Connectivity.
Second.
Have the motion in the second to, uh, send out the RFP for Improved Internet Connectivity to Hallstead. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes. Next item under new business is Main Street Accessible Parking Discussion. I'll let Ethan bring us up to par there.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, first this kind of started. Staff were approached by two different, uh, businesses downtown about establishing handicap spaces in front of their respective businesses. Um, as we worked with legal counsel and, um, Brad can probably explain some of the intricacies, uh, you know, Main Street, uh, is, is kind of a unique street i- i- in the terms of, you know, the fact that the street basically is gutter to gutter. It's very wide, but we have off-street parking, you know, in theory, in front of all the businesses in front of it. But, um, you know, in like the 300 block where there's kind of a narrowing at the two ends and then you have parking stalls, well, the 1 and 200 block are just open street. Historically, you know, the city has striped the curb, but we've never really gotten into, um, you know, typically, the off-street parking in front of businesses would largely be seen to be the businesses' responsibility, very similar to a sidewalk. Um, however, when you get into that and start thinking in the 1 and 200 block, well, those parking areas are all brick and, and, you know, relay into the street. So it just kind of opened up the discussion, I guess, of what do we want to do policy-wise for the city? I mean, it's in the public right-of-way, so if we're taking away a, a spot that's a public parking spot and dedicating it solely to that, it's probably something that the, the council should weigh in on. Uh, I believe you could also take the approach and say it's directly in front of a business and if they want to, you know, go to the expense of marking it and whatnot, we can clearly communicate that to the businesses. Um, again, just downtown is very interesting because you also obviously then are gonna start to say, you know, if, if we start to go down that road, well, then are you gonna allow every business to basically go out and say, "These are my two spots in front of my building, my two," and, you know, there's, there's hassles there. Brad can probably more eloquently explain the considerations, but, uh, obviously, we want to be supportive, you know? I mean, just using the rough ADA standards, there probably should be at least one spot in every single block that is a designated ADA spot. Wider, um, has access, you know, to ramps. We've tried to get the corners ADA compliant as, as projects have allowed. Um, there's not a lot of mid-block openings yet. That's hopefully something we can look to improve with future street projects on Main Street, but, uh, we kind of need, I guess, some policy direction of whether you guys want to, to utilize that. I will tell you, if we take it on, most likely, we're looking at the city becoming more involved in, in probably like formal striping and painting, um, than we have been, which is kind of, you know, touching up the spots and maybe we need to look at actually striping the bricks to get it more uniform as far as straight lines, not running like a center line or something, but actual parking stalls. Just to make sure that an ADA spot is compliant with, you know, the whole rules for van access and then obviously the city would have some responsibilities to make sure that the signs are posted and the, and the spot is marked appropriately, so...
If we put, let's, let's, he alluded to possibly, well, to be, do it right, we might have to have a handicap space on every block. That being the case, where the handicap space is located, would we also need a curb cutout for a wheelchair to?
Ultimately, the, the requirement, the short form answer to that is yes. But they are, the general requirement is only at the point, it's very much like any other ADA kind of a thing in a structure, if you would be familiar with. If you're going to make material changes to a structure and you've got 24-inch doors to bathrooms, suddenly you're going to be required to do some other types of revision. Same thing generally exists and applies to any kind of street rehab and construction. If we're doing that kind of recurbing and that kind of thing, then the expectation is we will make those, uh, ADA compliant. Short of that, however, if we're just striping and putting in, um, the handicapped accessibility, you know, in terms of a, a designated parking stall, no.
Right.
Uh, the, the thing that I discussed with Ethan is it's still our right-of-way. I'm a little reluctant to allow private property owners, um, to then come in and say, "Well, this is where I want to put it and I'm gonna pay for how I want it done and all that." It really is ours to do and it's still our obligation. Uh, the general standard is one every 25, although they do recommend one of, you know, every 20 parking stalls. In terms of striping, after Ethan and I talked, I went out and checked with several of the other cities. I happen to be going to meetings. And also just right in front of the, uh, city building in Newton, that's all brick and they have recently restriped that and it looks great and it, and it took it very well. I did not see what they did, um, if they even attempted to put the blue placard on the brick to see how that would look. Generally, they put up a T-post and they put up a vertical sign in those kinds of settings and that's, that's more than adequate and legally appropriate under the uniform signage requirements in the state of Kansas. So that's probably what we would do and what I'd probably recommend we do to be compliant. But in terms of our discussion and looking at it, we also have these cutouts that really go into easement or private property. In that instance, that would be yet another, uh, variation on, on the theme as to what we'd want to do. Do we want to somehow continue because it is easement in most cases? Still have some control over where it's designated or we just want to let the property owners like at the bank, we kind of talked about that, um, be able to do that. And there, I'm not as rabid about indicating to you that I'd really like to see us handle it because you have a little, uh, ability to, to fudge that. But, um, as to the general right-of-way, the curb-to-curb, I really think it should be us. And generally, when we do that, our, our standard approach under our code, uh, very much like speed signs and everything, uh, law enforcement, the chief is generally, you know, will come in and at least make some kind of a general recommendation or I have none, uh, so that we know the due diligence was done regarding traffic flow and safety. Um, and then the determination is made as a policy matter by this body, which is why we brought it up here tonight, um, to determine, well, we'd like to stripe the whole thing. Um, that paint is getting ever increasingly more expensive. Bentley just did it and it's high dollar. But, um, where we designate those stalls, and I would encourage that we try to be compliant with that. There is still an advocacy group in the state that will periodically just drive through a town and do their little audit. And I don't, I'm not trying to be disparaging, it's not a huge thing. If they just check to see if you're at least trying to be compliant and provide, um, some handicapped accessibility in a place to park with the appropriate width, which is extended, as Ethan said. Um, and if you don't, then they can, they send you that little letter that says, "If you don't start looking at doing this, we'll report it," and on and on and on. So it's easier to try to be, um, in a good faith, we're compliant as much as we can.
So how many would we actually need?
Four? Three or four?
Four on each side?
No, no, basically, one per block, so you would want, six total if you counted from Fourth Street North. And some of them you already have, like the library has one in front of it.
Okay.
Um, so that would take care of that whole 200 block east side, if you would. I know, granted, that's not close, very close to the chiropractor, but it, it would meet that one every 25 standard. Because I don't believe we have 25 full spots on either side of the road due to driveways and things of that nature. And kind of getting into the striping, as Brad, you know, in that 300 block, I mean, my thought there, as we've invested Dragon Grant, you know, trying to go into, you know, beautification of downtown and kind of uniformity, is you definitely run into, if you put it, the onus completely back on the business owner, every business owner's gonna have a different ability to pay for that. And so you might very well run into it. It's, it's a policy decision, so completely yours to make, but the bank might be able to restripe in front of them, but if the city doesn't do it in front of the, you know, Presbyterian church, you have that, or, you know, where you might have half the block that looks really nice and striped and then nothing. Um, I know, for instance, when we redid Third Street, uh, the city at that point decided that we were gonna, you know, stripe in front of Neighbors just because people park there and, and the public service that Neighbors provides while we were doing our own off-street parking here on Third. So I think there's definitely some benefit to the community for us to look at. Maybe Main Street striping is something that we wanna, we wanna look at. We can definitely get prices at the very least and even see what it's gonna run. It's all over the board, depending on what we do, whether it's just curb, we're asking for the lines.
Could we just stripe the handicap?
Or we could just, yeah, stall the handicap.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking you were talking about, was the handicap.
My first question is, do we have just one particular business asking for this currently?
Two.
Two.
We have two?
Yeah.
Could we accommodate those two businesses and, uh, develop a policy going forward after all the councils had a chance to kind of look at everything downtown? But do what we can to accommodate these two businesses for now?
Oh, yeah.
I do have one, one point I'd like to make is, some of these, the, the makeup of some of these blocks are different than others. For instance, from the library, from Third to Second Street, there are several entrances into that block that you wouldn't require a ma- a ramp, but for, on the west side, you've got from corner to corner. So my thought would be if we provide a handicap spot in the middle of the block, and somebody tell me what, what the negative thing about this is, I think we should also provide a ramp. A lot of times you have people coming off of a van with a wheelchair, a child or an elderly person with a motorized wheelchair. You don't want them to park in the middle of the block because that's where the space is, but then they've got to go down the street to go around the end. So I think we should look at putting a ramp where we provide the space.
And, and that's precisely why I made the point I did. If we can accommodate these two businesses that are asking for this now, we can probably spend the money to get those pro-tramps in and then maybe develop a plan for the development on the rest of Main Street to be compliant and look at that as a budget item for next year.
Say, because both, both the businesses that have requests now basically have open access. I mean, the ramp, i- installation of a ramp should not be an issue. They'd either be close enough to a drive or have the, have the cutout already.
Okay.
So...
Well, my, my thoughts would be put a proposal together and bring it back before the council to accommodate those two businesses. Give the council a chance to look at the rest of Main Street and develop some ideas and then maybe put your idea, your plan together for the rest of Main Street for us to review.
Say, because the two we have now, it would basically be, to Brad's point, I mean, the one, the one is Health Ministries and that's in the 100 block and the other was the bank. Um, and so it really just gets into the, if we're gonna treat, you know, policy-wise, you know, do we just want the bank to say, you know, "You mark it however you see fit because we consider that your parking, even though it's technically in the street easement, where's Health Ministries is very cut and dry." But we, in my opinion, the city does need to put the signage up because it, as Brad said, I mean, you have a curb-to-curb easement, basically. And if we did a street improvement project, I don't think the city is gonna take the, "Well, we're the middle 24 and unless a business owner chips in, we're not gonna touch the parking brick." I mean, that would be really short-sighted, in my opinion, for us to do.
Yeah, and, and even with our local businesses, I think the city and the business can work together to come to an agreement on, on being compliant with this issue.
Because it, say, I just, we've seen historically, I mean, just how hard it, it is and, and cost prohibitive to some of our businesses to even keep up on their sidewalk and now we're physically getting into the street infrastructure at that point with parking, so... But we can, we can definitely, I feel, move forward with the two that have an immediate need and we'll look at some of the costs and can bring that back.
Yeah, I think that would be important is to get an initial cost for the, the two that have the immediate need and then we'll have budgetary idea on the rest of it.
And the sign that's needed for the front of the parking stall, that's gonna have to be seven feet high, if I, right?
Yeah, that sounds right.
So we're gonna, it's gonna be a post and a sign.
Yeah.
Two posts and a sign.
Like the one at the library.
Okay. Do we have that on Main Street at all?
The library is the only one that has a designated spot in front of it, to my knowledge.
Does it have a sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, and City Hall, thank you, Pat.
Oh, City Hall.
We have one right in front of City Hall as well. And then there's an ADA spot in the very corner on Neighbors, but it's technically on Third Street. It's not on Main.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and those would be the three designated and then there's no other designated spot, to my knowledge.
Okay.
Any other questions on this issue, council? Well, let's move on the agenda because, you know, the Chiefs are playing tonight. Number five under new business, we need to set a, uh, work session date, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I apologize to stand making on the agenda. Um, as you all recall, the Public Wholesale Water Supply District is getting ready to, uh, renegotiate, uh, after 25 years, kind of the operating agreement between us, North Newton, uh, the City of Newton and Sedgwick. Um, that meeting is scheduled for November 3rd, uh, at Fire Station Number Three. So next council meeting, we'll actually declare that a special meeting date as long as we have a quorum that can make that Thursday night meeting. But we need to probably have about an hour-long work session, um, that, hopefully Brad will also be available um, to discuss basically the agreement, kind of go through it so you guys aren't going into that joint meeting, uh, blind. And we can do that any, anytime. I guess it works for Brad as well, um, either the week of the 17th or the 24th. Or I guess the week of the 31st, if it was before the 3rd. But I know the 31st itself is a fifth Monday, but that's also Halloween.
Yeah, it's Halloween and...
Halloween, Hal will be going on.
So if we were shooting for the week of the 24th, what day of the week's gonna work best for you guys?
The 26th.
That's a Wednesday.
Yep.
Brody?
25th would probably be better for me. I could probably do the 26th.
I can do 26th.
George?
I'm the same. 25th would be better, but I could do the 26th.
So is the 26th gonna work for you guys that said you could probably do it?
I've got, uh, Burton, but it starts at 5:30 for their court and we're usually done by 6:00. So if we did it like at 6:30 or 7:00, I'd be fine.
It's the 26th, that 7 work, Brad said he should. That would work in his schedule?
Probably. In terms of your time allotments, you can plan your evening, about an hour. We've already done more than weekends, um, and that was ample because we hand everything out in advance. Just go over the, the general history of all of this and give you some idea what we're doing, why we did it, what it looks like, what you should be looking for, what the... the impact may be to the city, what our benefits are, et cetera. So tends to make the other meeting in November go a lot more smoothly.
Yeah, is good with that. We'll put it together for 6:30 on 10/26.
Yep.
Is it 6:30?
Yeah. Then somebody make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to have a council work session on October 26th at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to set a work session date for 10/26 at 6:30 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That should be an interesting meeting. That's gonna conclude our regular agenda under new business. So we do have three executive sessions this evening, and I would entertain a motion for that first one now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Hallstead City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 754319B2, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney, the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 7:45 PM.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We will move. Okay, we're back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we'll move on down the agenda, and we do have a second, or a number two of three executive sessions, and I'll entertain the motion for that one now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Hallstead. Mr. Mayor, I move that the Hallstead City Council recess into executive session to discuss proprietary business information pursuant to the confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, exception KSA 754319B4, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney, the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 7:55 PM.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are in executive session. Let's move back. We are back from our second executive session. Any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, I would entertain a motion for our third executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss performance review of the city manager. And ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session upon invitation: the city manager or city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 25 PM.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay, council, let's-
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to give the city manager a 3% merit raise.
Second.
Have a motion in a second based on the city manager's annual review to award him a 3% merit increase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Ethan. We'd like to keep you for an employee. That takes care of all of our executive sessions. That gets us to the report section of our agenda. I'll start with governing body comments, and tonight I'll start with you, Brody.
I just want to thank everyone for everything they did over this past weekend with the barn sale and the Brick Street Festival. It's really good seeing so many people in town and enjoying the city.
Let's get moving for now. Good to you, George.
Yeah, I'd also like to mention that was a great weekend. It was good to see so many people in town. I did receive an email this evening just before coming to council meeting from a resident who had mentioned he's wheelchair-bound, and he had gone down to the barn sale, and he was having trouble getting up inside the middle area because the curbs are too steep. His wheelchair would hang up on the curb. He couldn't get up there. So I'm thinking maybe when we have that curb cut, maybe we cut a couple of curb access cuts into that so people can get into that middle area. He couldn't get in there at all.
I'm going to make a note about that, and we can discuss that when we're looking at those projects.
Grant just asked me to tell everyone, maybe even get in the newspaper, that he still has tree vouchers to give away, $50 each. So I told him I'd mention that.
Okay. Derek?
Love the vermeida.
Okay. Well, as always, I get at least one chance a year to really enjoy being mayor, and that's to attend the Brick Streets Arts and Crafts Fair and make the mayor's choice. So this year, I settled on a, it's called the charcuterie board. Hopefully, I said that right, and people serve cheese and salamis and sausage. This one probably will never see food. It'll probably get hung on the wall at City Hall. But the booth that hosted this was Kathy Marath, and hopefully I didn't butcher that name. And the maker was actually Barney McCary, and his two daughters, Allison and Madison, got the credit and the check, Barney, so you might want to check them and make sure they have that check. But this is the piece that I selected, so this was mayor's choice at this year's Brick Streets Arts and Crafts Fair. And Julie will find a nice place to hang it down here at City Hall.
In my office.
In your office? So I'd like to congratulate Barney and tell him a wonderful job of craftsmanship. And again, I was out and about. I seen a lot of faces I didn't recognize in the hall sit this weekend with the addition of the barn sale, and it was fun to see everybody. So that's all I have to say. We'll move on to our city manager for the city manager report. And we have a third quarter financial, so you can go on into that, Ethan, when you get there.
Thank you. Just some highlights. I emailed you all the formal report with all the details and stats from the various departments. But we did get our renewal rate from the KMIT Association Health Plan, so we are working with Mike Wise, our insurance consultant, on the options and advice on renewal. And we'll look at presenting that information to you guys at a subsequent council meeting. We are also looking into some options for a potential change or re-up on website redesign. It's been quite some time since the city did its last major overhaul with Civic Plus, so staff are looking into that. As reported and pushed out on our
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to give the city manager a 3% merit raise.
Second. Have a motion in a second based on the city manager's annual review to award him a 3% merit increase. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Ethan. We'd like to keep you for an employee. That takes care of all of our executive sessions. That gets us to the report section of our agenda. I'll start with governing body comments, and tonight I'll start with you, Brody.
I just want to thank everyone for everything they did over this past weekend with the barn sale and the Brick Street Festival. It's really good seeing so many people in town and enjoying the city.
We'll skip me for now and go to you, George.
Yeah, I'd also like to mention it was a great weekend. It was good to see so many people in town. I did receive an email this evening, just before coming to council meeting, from a resident who had mentioned he's wheelchair-bound, and he had gone down to the barn sale, and he was having trouble getting up inside the middle area because the curbs are too steep. His wheelchair would hang up on the curb. He couldn't get up there. So I'm thinking maybe when we have that curb cut, maybe we cut a couple of curb access cuts into that so people can get into that middle area. He said he couldn't get in there at all.
Ethan make a note about that, and we can discuss that when we're looking at those projects.
Grant just asked me to tell everyone, maybe I can get in the newspaper, that he still has tree vouchers to give away, $50 each. So I told him I mentioned that.
Okay. Derek?
Love the vermeide night.
Okay. Well, as always, I get at least one chance a year to really enjoy being mayor, and that's to attend the Brick Streets Arts and Crafts Fair and make the mayor's choice. So this year, I settled on a, it's called a charcuterie board. Hopefully I said that right, and people serve cheese and salamis and sausage. This one probably will never seafood. It'll probably get hung on the wall at City Hall. But the booth that hosted this was Kathy Marath, and hopefully I didn't butcher that name. And the maker was actually Barney McCary, and his two daughters, Allison and Madison, got the credit and the check, Barney, so you might want to check them and make sure they have that check. But this is the piece that I selected. So this was mayor's choice at this year's Brick Streets Arts and Crafts Fair. And Julie will find a nice place to hang it down here at City Hall.
In my office.
In your office? So I'd like to congratulate Barney and tell him a wonderful job of craftsmanship. And again, I was out and about. I seen a lot of faces I didn't recognize in the Hallstead this weekend with the addition of the barn sale, and it was fun to see everybody. So that's all I have to say. We'll move on to our city manager for the city manager report. And we have a third quarter financial, so you can go on into that, Ethan, when you get there.
Thank you. Just some highlights. I emailed you all the formal report with all the details and stats from the various departments. But we did get our renewal rate from the KMIT Association Health Plan. So we are working with Mike Wise, our insurance consultant, on the options and advice on renewal. And we'll look at presenting that information to you guys at a subsequent council meeting. We are also looking into some options for a potential change or re-up on website redesign. It's been quite some time since the city did its last major overhaul with Civic Plus, so staff are looking into that. As reported and pushed out on our social media, this city did receive a $400,000 transportation alternatives grant from the state of Kansas for the Safe Route School. Very happy about that. We did work with the city of North Newton, the library, and the Kansas Learning Center, and put together a seed grant application, got that turned in, so we should hopefully be hearing on that with the city of Hallstead serving as the fiscal agent there. Did also complete our hazard mitigation grant application, or letter of intent, excuse me. And then we're getting ready to submit another hazard mitigation letter of intent related to storm shelters at Riverside and Williams Park. That would include restrooms. Also wanted to point out, in case anyone missed it, our newest police officer, who pretty much got hired and then immediately sent to KLET C, Officer Jason Million, did complete basic training as part of the 299th class there. And just really want to point out that Officer Million was awarded the Larry D. Welch Academic Excellence Award for having the highest test scores and GPA in the class. So very proud of him for that accomplishment. He has begun field training and will hopefully be on solo shifts come January. Other than that, as far as Parks and Rec, the tree voucher program is going well. $250 worth of vouchers have already been issued for people to plant trees on their property here in town. So anyone that's interested, please get with City Hall or find Grant when he's out and about, and we can tell you all about it. Basketball signup is underway. Volleyball has been completed. And the waterline projects for the Ninth and Walnut were officially sent into KDHE, so we're awaiting their approval there. Hopefully it'll be 60 days or less, but last time it was considerably longer. And we are currently also visiting with Mies to see if they have any interest in performing that work when hopefully they would be doing the Cedar Meadows work. And other than that, that's all I have as far as the manager's report.
Anybody have any questions of that manager's report? Okay, go ahead and lay the financial on us, Ethan.
You do have the handouts there. Treasurer's report, we weren't quite done with reconciliation for September. So hopefully next meeting you'll have the formal treasurer reports in your agenda. But reconciliation of August was completed. Overall, the city has just shy of 6.4 million in cash and investments, just over 3.8 million outstanding liabilities and long-term debt. Our capital equipment fund has a balance of just over $815,000, and the capital improvement fund has just under $1 million, including almost $600,000 that's earmarked for street repairs in anticipation of those upcoming projects. The city started the quarter with just over 6.6 million and had just under 1.8 million in revenues and transfers, and then expended or transferred out just shy of 2 million during the third quarter, resulting in a final cash balance at the end of the quarter, down about $200,000 or at 6.4 million. Across all budgeted funds, our overall cash position was favorable compared to the previous fiscal year, with most funds having improved cash position compared to the third quarter of 2021. None of those funds that have lost cash position from the previous year have a significant decrease, or a decrease that's not explained by the timing of certain expenditures and transfers. City's processed just over $127,000 in total reimbursable expenditures for the year. Examples of those include like the library payroll or the housing authority capers payments. Overall budgeted fund revenues are about 100% of projection for the fiscal year, so that's really nice to be at that level going into the fourth quarter. And then our expenditures are running just shy of around 67% total, which is about 8% lower than we would expect at this point in our fiscal year. Revenues are being driven by strong sales tax collections, which continue to outpace and exceed 2021 collection, investment income continuing to improve as those rates rise. And then I just wanted to note, the golf course did break $200,000 in revenue by the end of the quarter, so they're having a really good year as well. Swimming pool revenues kept in pace with the projections for the pool. And then other revenues such as municipal court EMS billing and franchise fees continue to be unfavorable, unfortunately. Expenditures overall are below expectations, although again, as has been noted many times in the financial reports, upward pressure is continuing due to fuel and energy prices, increased supply costs and lead times, and then overall wage lines just due again to staff turnover and training of new staff costs. Most departments are running under budget with one exception, and which again, that's primarily driven by fuel and the seasonal nature of that department. All expected budgeted transfers for equipment or capital projects have been made so far, and additional sales tax collections were high enough that we've transferred all of the expected money to the bond and interest fund and the capital improvement fund, so the remaining balance of additional sales tax money stays in the general fund as general revenue. Enterprise funds, which are the city's utilities, continue to operate in a healthy manner. Our average expense-to-revenue ratio is just over 65%, and all funds are relatively in the same cash position as last year at this time. The gas fund continues to see pressure from the elevated commodity prices being paid for natural gas. It is possible that we might have to entertain a budget amendment due to those just higher gas prices, since we didn't know what gas prices would be 18 months ago, and didn't expect them to be sustained at this level like they have been thanks to certain global events. The city's wastewater fund has the worst expense-to-revenue ratio, with expenditures being driven by the higher utility costs and then several repair and replacement needs, both the lift stations and the wastewater treatment plant. The budgeted transfers to both the city's general funds, capital funds, and utility reserves were able to be made without any negative consequence to the projected performance of the funds. The balance of the city's wastewater treatment plant loan is just over $100,000, and the gas loan for February is down to about 1.75 million from the original 2 million. Staff continue to wait on information regarding any potential rate changes to that gas loan. And then the city has also engaged Ransom Financial, who will be coming in and looking at our wastewater rates and model various scenarios regarding the potential upgrades or replacement of the wastewater treatment plant so we can present that information for you all to help illuminate a decision on how to proceed with the wastewater treatment plant repairs or upgrades. Overall, we're just in a very good and healthy place financially. It should allow us to continue to be responsive and meet those challenges of energy and fuel prices that we're continuing to pay, so.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for that financial report? Well, one additional item tonight, and it's been brought to my attention that the work session we scheduled earlier is not going to work, so we need to revisit that. A new proposed time is to set this meeting for Thursday, October 20th at 6:30. And if that will work with you, counsel, I would appreciate a motion from one of you to make that happen.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to set a council work session for October 20th at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to set a work session for October 20th at 6:30 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, what else do we need, Ethan?
I was just going to ask, I guess, for clarification, that, does the motion also intend to cancel the one that was scheduled on 27th?
Yes. Yeah, thought that went without saying, but this is governing, so we have to say that. It was implied, Brad.
Thought about it.
Well, that does conclude our agenda this evening, ladies and gentlemen, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.